Call this work session of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Madam Clerk, roll.
Yes, Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Mayor J. Matt Davis.
Here.
Councilmember John Partt, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Present.
All present.
All right. Opening remarks. Don't have any upcoming agenda items. We have a discussion of the comprehensive plan and agenda item printout here. There were some changes we wanted to make to the comp plan. Is that what that's about?
That's correct. We had two council members that have offered amendments, so we wanted to talk to council about that and get specific directions so we could move those items back to the Planning Commission for consideration and then back to you all for public hearing.
Okay.
So, I'll start off, if you don't mind, John. There was an email that I forwarded from Historic Brookhaven Neighborhood Association. It had been prepared by their counsel, Carlos Westmoreland. They're all relatively minor changes, in my opinion, and I just wanted to make sure that those were included in the comprehensive plan. I understand there was one point where it seemed that the change was in opposition to public comment, but I just want to understand that more clearly.
Yes, sir. Those requested or mentioned items were not included in the comprehensive plan. We did receive comments from the public, vetted through the public hearing process, wherein the request was to include Fuller Road as a gateway into the Historic Brookhaven area. Attached with that request was the bylaws from the Historic Brookhaven Neighborhood Association identifying that area to be included in what they refer to as the Historic Brookhaven area. When the consultant reviewed that request, and we took it to the Steering Committee as well as the Planning Commission and Council, the discussion was that even though Fuller Road and the Osborne area are more compact development, there was a thought process that Fuller Road could serve as a gateway into the Historic Brookhaven Neighborhood area. So, it went through the process, it went through the public hearing process, and so the plan that you adopted does not include the comments that are contrary to that. However, in looking at the area, there is probably some room to look at perhaps a compromise in the middle between a portion of Fuller Road that could perhaps be looked at as a stopping point further away from Osborne. In the event that we do make a change, we would need to look at moving that area, Fuller Road, back into the Osborne character area rather than the HBNA historic area. So, we would need some direction from council as to which approach you'd prefer to take, and then obviously, we would go back through the public hearing process, which would probably put us back to the council in March. If you would choose to post that for 30 days, much as we did in the past, that is kind of the timeframe that we would end up in, back before the council in March. We would be required to have a public hearing before both the Planning Commission and the city council. And that would be the process we would need to utilize for the other request as well, which we can talk about in just a second.
So, what I want to understand is how the consultant or even the steering committee could supersede the wish of the neighborhood as an organization and the council representative who's making this suggestion that I'm in agreement with their change?
Well, I don't think that the consultant was superseding a request. The request came through the process.
Right.
The request from a property owner in that area along Fuller Road submitted documentation, which was vetted by the committee.
Yeah.
Went through the public hearing, was posted and available to the public to review. So, it did go through the process. So, I don't think anyone is superseding anyone or any kind of process. I think that the request that you have with you now came after the adoption of the plan. And so, certainly, there is a process available to reconsider that, and it would be an amendment to the plan. But, in that regard, in that we've already adopted the plan.
Isn't that what we're discussing there, right? Isn't that what's on the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that what we're talking about? Is it amendment to the plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, basically, I suppose the right way to approach this is, so, I would like to see these changes implemented and put into the plan. What are the steps for us to make those changes?
The steps would be for the staff to receive further direction from council. We would then engage the consultants to amend the plan. We would advertise it for public hearing. Take the changes to the Planning Commission to consider their input. Have a public hearing. Bring it back to the council in March for reconsideration for adopting the amendment to the plan. And that would include, if we do make a change to that particular character area, meaning the Historic Brookhaven character area, it would appear that we would then amend the Osborne character area to include that area of Fuller Road. So, that would be the process to consider your request and the request that you're carrying forward from the community.
All right. So...
How do we, why are these requested revisions not in our agenda packet?
This is a discussion item.
Want to discuss the items, I'd like to see the items.
Yeah.
Did we not forward, did you not forward those?
You know, I don't think that I forwarded it to the entire mayor and council, but the staff certainly has these changes.
What about yours?
I forwarded it to the council a few weeks ago.
Staff, too?
Yeah.
Well, we certainly don't have a formal presentation in that this is a discussion item.
So...
I would just like to know what we're, exactly what we're considering, so then we can discuss it, and then you can set it in process if that's what we want to do.
Yeah. So, I suppose, so what I will do is I will forward these proposed changes to the rest of the mayor and council and work directly with community development to make sure that the changes that are expressed here are somehow included in a presentation or something that the council could consider?
We can certainly put something more formal together for you. I think in the correspondence that was forwarded to me, there was a request to remove the fact that, or to remove indications that this area is on the National Register of Historic Places. That's actually in the adopted text. That's one of the strike-throughs in the text proposed. I think in the additional correspondence, we received some vetting that's still required on behalf of their attorney, Carlos Westmoreland. So, we don't currently have the additional requests that I believe your area is seeking. I mean, but this is a springboard and platform to move from, which is why we're having a discussion.
Okay. And it's not, this is not something, based on your email, we don't have to have these changes made before the end of the year, and we don't have to have DCA review any of this.
No, no.
This is basically just internal for our cities.
DCA will not be involved in this. This will be a planned amendment, but it will be a public hearing. So, for discussion purposes, I think we're on target with how we need to proceed.
Okay. Yeah. So, I'll get with you to make sure, because honestly, some of the strike-throughs on these recommendations, I wasn't sure whether those were coming from the city or from the HBNA's attorney.
Those strike-throughs were not from the city.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So, then, I'll send this to all the mayor and council, and then we'll look at the first of the year to maybe pick this back up at one of our council meetings then. Then, once it's finalized, I imagine you'll want the direction from the council that we're ready to go on it.
Right.
And then you can put it through the whole process with planning commission and all that.
What I'd like to do is put it back on your next work session and then on the council agenda, so you can direct it, because I don't want you to lose any time because of the requirements of advertising and getting it back to the Planning Commission and then back before you all. As Ms. Cannon said, it would be March. So, I'd like to be able to take advantage of that and just put that back on your next agenda.
All right.
John, your revisions involve the PDK Flight Zone, Crash Zone area, and there was one other thing, is that right?
That's it. It's the former Crash Zone.
Just want to talk about what you're proposing.
Well, basically, there's 28 acres of old growth forest that used to be the protected crash zone for the runway at PDK, and that runway was closed. And just over the summer, the FCC, FAA, FAA removed the deed restriction on it. So, therefore, it's basically surplus property for DeKalb County. Now, DeKalb owns the land, but we are the zoning authority. And the will of the people, in my opinion, especially in District Two and in the rest of Brookhaven, is that it not be priority redevelopment, that it, there is a very strong wish by the people that at a minimum, an amount of it is preserved as green space and passive recreation and provide a buffer in terms of pollution and sound and all that from the airport. So, basically, it's just to remove that priority redevelopment designation in the comprehensive plan on that property, because there's still a lot of legal issues with that property that haven't been cleared up that is going to come to a head. But, I think as a city, it definitely does not reflect what the citizens want. So, I wanted that just stricken, just removed.
And then, if it's stricken, then whatever plans, we won't be limited, if we want to make it all green space, if we have the ability to do that, if we want to make some of it, if we have the ability to do that, it allows us to have the freedom to be out from under saying it should be developed.
Right. You know, one thing...
Some background on that, if you don't mind, Ms. Garrett. Some background on that is the discussion was very thorough with the committee at that time in discussing, you know, what to do with that property, knowing that the runway was closed there. And the discussion in the joint work session was that it's probably one of the largest undeveloped tracts of land in the city of Brookhaven, and the infrastructure there lends itself to perhaps some commercial development along Claremont Road with some sensitivity to the neighborhood around it and looking at how to tie it into the properties across Claremont Road, given the airport and just really the mix of what's happening there. So, it did go to the committee. There was quite a bit of discussion among both consulting groups via land use and transportation, and the commercial proposal there is for low-impact commercial along the main roadway there with some mixed use and walkability and pedestrian movement from the property directly behind it on the undeveloped tract. So, having said that, we have adopted that. It's certainly your prerogative to take another look at that. It would be the same process as I previously described. Again, it would be a public hearing to fully vet it, and both the Planning Commission and council would have an additional public hearing to consider the proposed change.
If we strike that recommendation on it and don't replace it with anything, what does that mean?
Well, we'll have to replace it with something, as you've indicated. You've indicated, perhaps, I think you said, green space, a buffer, something for buffering and sound from the airport. We would have to address it with something. There are several places in the comp plan relating to that area. So, we would have to address it with, we can't just take it out. We have to address it in one way or another.
You know, we don't have control over that property, obviously, but I think John's right. You know, of course, the people that live around it want it to stay green space forever, because that's what they're, who wouldn't? And I think it'd be a great park for the city. You know, something on the front, you know, the front two or three acres on Claremont, I think there's a little, there's a storage area there now. But, you know, that's a different story. But, you know, I think we need to send a message to folks that we understand that the people in John's district are very concerned about, and not just the people that live right around it, it's other folks as well. So, if you can figure out something that gives us a little flexibility without, you know, designating that it be developed while still allowing for a small portion of the front piece to possibly be, you know, park, you know, pavilion or something, you know, just so that we can have some kind of options. Maybe the whole thing's green space, maybe most of it is, we don't know. So, but right now, as it's designated, I think that kind of, I understand your explanation, it makes sense, but just the message to people, I think, who needs to be amended on that.
We can certainly move forward with that, engage the consultants to take a look at some of the shape files and get the maps prepared, and we'll have that ready for your next meeting for both areas.
All right. Thank you.
I would just add a caveat and in large part, really, a caution. I'm personally confused about that parcel and the ownership and who ultimately has control of it. It's always been my understanding that, yes, DeKalb owns it, but FAA has had control, and if DeKalb sells it, it has to be for highest and best use, and the money proceeds would go back to the airport fund. So, I think there's some, I think, misconception in parts of the community that this is somehow free green space.
Right.
I'd caution you against that.
That's why I was giving the caveat, we don't own the property.
Until we know, really, the full extent of this and have fully vetted it, we can declare things green space all day long, but if we don't own it and the FAA goes off and sells it for whatever purpose, we may or may not have any say over it except for the zoning. So...
That's why I kind of wanted, whatever we replaced it with, give us flexibility.
I would just tread carefully.
Tom noted.
Just one further comment for you all to keep in mind, and Tom and I were speaking earlier this afternoon about this property, and Rebecca, you're making a good point, which we talked about, that we do need to research what the requirements or contingencies are on the property. But, the other thing that you have as well, remember, you know, the land use plan or the comp plan is your guiding plan. Your zoning ordinance is what controls development. You know that with the approval now of the comprehensive plan, we're going to be moving in year 2015, and we have this in the proposed budget, to recodify the zoning ordinance, which will come along with a new map. And that would be a very good opportunity to designate that property in the amendment of your zoning map, to administratively zone that map with a new category. And I'm sure we'll be looking at different zoning districts, and it will be, you know, up to the council to take a look at that.
So, that's not like government-initiated rezoning, it's just part of our comp plan thing. So, it's a little simpler process.
It would be, what I'm trying to say is that you would have an opportunity that would present itself with the recodification of the zoning ordinance and along with the adoption of a new zoning map, especially if you are creating new zoning classifications that you may want to go ahead and assign on properties.
All right. So, if it's now zoned light industrial, which I think it is, if we, when we had recodified, Tom could answer this question, would DeKalb or the FAA have some kind of cause of action against us for devaluing their property?
No, because whoever had the property would still have the benefit of what the zoning classification is, notwithstanding the comprehensive plan.
If we take something, if we make it less than light industrial...
Well, if you do that, then it's a matter of going through the zoning procedures and the hearing and everything else.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out if we take away, if we devalue the zoning classification by saying it's not light industrial, maybe it's, you know, green space or whatever. I don't, to Rebecca's point, what kind of legal liabilities we're opening ourselves up to if we take a piece of property that's zoned?
And zone it to the fact that somebody's not able to use it?
In the way that they had...
Well, either planned or put it in a way that they can't use it at all, other than it's green space.
Right.
Yes, that would be actionable. I mean, you'd be taking, you'd be taking an obvious property, right? And frankly, if you want to do that, then I would suggest you start considering buying it.
Right. Can you, and we had that meeting that John was at, it was called the PDK Green Space Meeting, and one of the suggestions that I thought of was having the city contact an FAA attorney to start trying to figure out what the legal ramifications are from their end and from that end. Because I'm sure there's been some precedence with this in other areas before, where airports have closed or where there have been runways closed, where there's been property that's been released in a certain way. So, I would just want to know if we can...
Well, it ends up being, you know, a real estate question, and Ms. Garrett and I were discussing this earlier. My recommendation is to go ahead and let's do an examination of the title of the property and see what sort of restrictions are on it or not on it and determine, you know, what the title says, because that's really what's going to drive it, and whether or not the FAA has released it from whatever restriction that's there. Because certainly, if there was a use restriction in connection with it, then it'll be of record.
Well, from the perspective that there's got to be attorneys with FAA experience on this type of issue, I would think it would be, if somebody can just research and find if there's a name of somebody that might be able to help us understand this a little more thoroughly.
Certainly.
I would appreciate that. Right?
My conversations...
There's a question that keeps getting asked about this, and there's not really ever a clear answer. So, I want to get out of that circle and try to do something different.
And that's by researching what's there. I mean, that's...
If we can do that.
Yeah. So, we'll do that.
So, in my conversations with the COO, it appears that that land's going to be going for upwards of $5 million, upwards, which is fairly expensive. Now, Susan and Ben, it's my understanding that the back portion of that land is wetlands. Is that correct? Is there a portion of wetlands on that? Bennett, would you know? That was my, that was my understanding.
There's a pretty large ravine with the creek that flows through it. And from what I understand, I talked to a hydrologist about this property. It's going to be, it's going to be pretty hard to develop that portion.
Right.
And because of the creek, there are going to be some things that have to be done. So, and that's why, I mean, there's an appraisal that was done a couple of years ago that came out, three and a half million. And there's one that, you know, and then I'm just hearing a number of, you know, somewhere in the upwards of $5 million now. But, there are a lot of, we keep asking questions, and when I say we, I mean, the citizens in the area that are concerned about it. They've hired attorneys, and they're looking into it as well, the various citizen groups. And some are saying that, you know, that there's an FAA requirement for highest and best use. Some are saying that the property was deeded and basically gifted from an individual to the government in order to, I think, for an airbase or something. So, therefore, once that restriction is removed, it's just a straight-up clean title. So, there are a lot of questions that do need to be cleared up, but as far as evaluation, there, I was talking to some people at the county, and there is precedent for not transferring it at, you know, quote, market value, that highest and best use isn't necessarily, you know, economically driven market value. There are many other factors that, really, for something that, for this property that is really one of the last pieces of oak growth forest in the city of Brookhaven, it is something that we shouldn't come to a quick decision on, that we should, number one, it is public plan, and therefore, there should be public input and clear up all the legal ramifications and all the title and all those things on it. So, and it is, there are multiple ways to put a permanent deed restriction on it to maintain it as green space. There's the DeKalb Green Space Program. There's the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. There are a lot of different ways to do it. But, we just, but the point of this discussion is to set the direction of the city, to reflect the will of the people, which is not to develop the entire lot. And that seems to be what the citizens want.
We're not familiar with a wetlands delineation, but we'll double-check all of that, just as, you know, along with the title search and everything else. But, I'm not familiar with that being delineated as wetlands, but we'll clarify all of that.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make one quick statement, because I don't want to, I don't want my statement earlier to have misled you that there would be a rezoning of the property to special use. My point is that recodifying the zoning ordinance gives you a great opportunity for the staff, especially, to take a look at, number one, current zoning classifications, where they're located in the city, and even new zoning classification and where they would be appropriately located in the city. And in this particular property, my point in saying that you would have this opportunity for a zoning classification on the site was that you would take into consideration the properties that are contiguous to this FAA Crash Zone site, and what are those zonings of those properties and what would be more compatible. So, whether it is a residential zone, and in that residential zone, there are a number of expressly permissible uses, and one of which could be open space or parks. That's usually customary when you see different types of residential. So, I'm saying that there are opportunities that will be made available to you to better make that property fit within the overall scheme of compatibility to the area.
All right. Other agenda items?
Yes. The next item on the agenda, we spoke under other business, if there's nothing under that. Okay. Other business, item number one, we spoke at our last meeting work session about the possibility of reviewing increasing our hotel motel tax, and you all wanted to take a look at what the surrounding areas are doing for municipalities. And we have a list, and the city clerk just gave it to you, showing what Cherokee County, Clayton County, Cobb County, and DeKalb County, along with a number of cities and counties in the metro area as to what their current hotel motel tax is. DeKalb County is at 8%. Atlanta is at 8%. Avondale Estates is at 8%. Shambly currently is at 5%, but was discussing at their December 11th council meeting, raising their hotel motel tax to 8%. Of course, ours is at 5, Decatur at 7, Dorville at 5, and I believe Sandy Springs is at 7 as well. So, this gives you an indication of what your surrounding cities and counties are doing from the standpoint of a competitive state. And as we talked about last time, that differential of the 3% would enable you to use that under a recreation authority, pledge those dollars to assist in building and developing parks. This would require a legislative act, does not require a referendum. It's an act that the General Assembly would submit for the governor's signature. So, if that's something that you desire to do, we can move forward on that, or if you'd like more time to think about it. But, we've got the General Assembly reconvening next month, and it would be better to be early to get any legislation in that you have desires for.
I can, you know, we talked about this last year, and from what I recall of that discussion, we talked about the importance of having a plan, you know. So, if we are going to get more money, it's sort of like, you know, if you're doing fundraising or if you're, you know, trying to make your case for higher taxes for anything, if you can define what it's going to be used for, it's so much easier to sell to the people. And I think that's where, that's the hesitancy I have in saying, go ahead and move it to 8. I think ultimately, it's a good idea, but I think it's important for the city to have a plan of what we're going to do for that money. And I think the two parts that we need to do is, we've discussed before, really defining that tourism board, you know, making sure that it has representative people from the hotel motel industry. Here, it's the hotel industry. And having that board essentially have a plan of what they intend to use their money for throughout the year. And then, you know, that's the perfect case scenario of what I'd like to see happening. I know that Mike is doing a fantastic job, and the Office of Tourism is doing a lot of great things in Brookhaven, but I feel it's also important for our citizens to understand exactly what that tourism board is doing and for them to have an understanding of how they're going to spend all that money and that we can see up here and sign off on.
Right. One of the good things is that we do have a good start that the future tourism board, or actually, it's the Convention Visitors Bureau can use, and that's our Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan. We have the North Fork Trail, which is going to need funding assistance. And then also, there has been a call for a conference center, a sports complex would be a good fit for the Beaufort Highway corridor as well. So, we do have, and then, of course, our Parks and Recreation Plan mirrors that as well. So, we have a good foundation to begin.
So, if we were, you know, what's the lag time? If we were to ask, basically, you're wanting to get approval to go and ask the legislature to enact this change for us.
Right.
If they enacted that, wouldn't it become effective at the, at July?
When the governor signs and...
When the governor signs. Right. So, that's when the change would be made. So, it would affect half of their 2015 budget. Basically, that change would be the second half of the year.
Looks like there are 61 jurisdictions on this in the metro area that have a hotel motel tax. One has none, so there are actually 60 jurisdictions that have a hotel motel tax. 33 of them have less... Thirty-three of them have less, have a hotel motel tax of less than 8%. So the majority of the, all these jurisdictions have less than 8%. Minority has more than 8%, it's fairly close, it's almost even. I'm not in favor of increasing the hotel motel tax in Brookhaven. I won't, I won't be asking the legislature to do that, but it's up to y'all too, so.
Do we know what the dollar amount on that is, by percent?
We're expecting, we're in the neighborhood of 1.3 million in hotel motel tax collection. So 40% of that goes into the tourism budget, and then 3% in addition to that. Pardon me? Yeah. Yeah, so we would add, actually, it would be 40% plus the 3%. So 3% of 1.2 million is another.
About 1.4 million, I think, would be your, if your, your budget that you have in the budget for the, for the tourism fund is for 2015, about a million bucks?
Yes.
And so we're talking about a 40% increase of that million, so that'd be 1.4 million, I think.
I think the low is 3%, the high is 8%, so I think we're about in the middle. Our surrounding jurisdictions are, you know, Shambly and Dunwoody are 5%, Dorville's 5%.
So, you know, I, I actually.
Oh, excuse me, it's tonight for Shambly.
Shambly's what?
To raise it to 8%.
I, I, I believe we shouldn't follow Shambly in raising the tax.
So I, and the argument for it is that this is, can be considered similar to a CID, a self-taxing district, where you're taking.
CID's are voluntary.
Well, yeah, but, but that's what I'm saying.
When the person comes into the lobby of the hotel, and you're not, we voluntarily pay a little more taxes, it's not, it's not really comparable to a CID.
It, here's, here's the argument I'll make. So when the, when the, you know, the convention, the Convention Visitors Bureau of the city of Brookhaven is considering attracting people to their hotels, it is these, it is the use of this money, and then park improvements, that actually, you know, makes people consider going to their hotel rather than a hotel in Shambly or in Atlanta. So you can understand how this industry could see the potential benefit in, in an increase of this. I just, you know, we've got a chicken and egg situation. You know, we know that really, we want to get this industry's buy-in to the idea before we increase the tax.
I'd like to get the citizens' buy-in too.
But if we don't, you know, if we don't have it, it's a whole nother 12 months that, that is missed, if we don't act at this meeting.
I have a question. Could, so you mentioned the various purviews of the hotel motel tax, and the Recreation Authority, and tourism. You mentioned the North Fork, the sports complex. Could that money also be used in our current parks?
Yes.
For instance, could it be used for, if we wanted to host swimming competitions? Could we use it for Browardwood Park?
If we wanted to improve the pool so that they could accommodate a large meet, yes.
So if we had the legislature enact it, would there be a requirement that the city actually follow, that, you know, that it move, or?
Well, that's what would be expected, that if, you know, since we're asking for it, and if they do enable the city to do it, we would follow through upon the governor's signature.
I was gonna say, my, my opinion is that as far as taxes, like anything else, we need to be competitive, and the cab is at 8, that's, what's the land area in terms of, in terms of competing, are hotels competing with the cab, the cab hotels? We're staying competitive, and it's not, it's not something where we just raise taxes and just spend it on anything that we want, it has to go towards some type of, it has to have a specific use. And, you know, we don't raise, set tax rates in a vacuum. We set them to be competitive with our neighbors. And Shambly's considering it, the cab is already at 8%. If, just thinking about the hotels in the area, most of our hotels, I think, compete, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm just thinking about where our hotels are, compete with those in Atlanta and those in Decap County. And I think we would remain competitive, and I, and one of the factors, I think, in any tax increases, how does it affect, you know, behavior? How does it affect the economy in general? And are we gonna remain competitive? And I don't, I mean, we can, we can discuss this, I don't, I don't see how it would, if we're, if we have the same rate.
Well, right. You know, you hear from some folks, it really doesn't have an effect. There are people who would do it, believe it has an effect, but in general, it's, you know, it's not that nefarious of a tax to raise. It's just the principle of it, to me, is we're at 5%. If you've got a large party of people coming in to a wedding of 100 rooms, and you're getting a rate, and half a mile over the, over, over towards Sandy Springs or towards Atlanta, it's 3% more on, you know, 50 rooms, you know, maybe that's a few thousand, maybe it's a thousand dollars, I don't know, of extra that your guests would be paying, or if you're booking any kind of large book of rooms, that's why I think when you'd feel, when you, when you'd get the competitive, you know, aspect coming into it, whether it's 5% and 3% on a large purchase is a lot of money. On a one hotel room of $69, it's not that much. But if you're doing a bunch of hotel rooms, I think it, it can be competitive. It's a, it's a rare, more rare situation, but I, in my mind, are just taking more money out of somebody's pocket, and, you know, I think that, I'm not in favor of raising, I think, 5%. We're, we're not the lowest, we're not the highest, we're right there in the middle. And just because Decap and Atlanta are 8%, doesn't, I don't think that means to get competitive with them, we need to raise the tax. We're more competitive because our rate is less, not, you get higher, then you're being less competitive.
Well, and the other thing is the, the price elasticity of, of the hotel rates. I mean, you, I used to consult actually for a hotel chain, and you go into a back room, and they would have a little board that says how many rooms to sell tonight.
Right.
And so the price would fluctuate for a typical courtyard or something like, could fluctuate anywhere from $69 a night to $500 a night, based on demand. So I, I think there, there are aspects of taxing that definitely affect behavior and definitely affect, you know, it, it will.
This is probably one of those ones that's on the lower end of affecting.
Yeah, I, I just see it, when, when I think about the margins, and I think about the elastic, you know, the discrimination, the price discrimination and the price elasticity of it, this 3% increment, I just don't see it really making us any less competitive. But I see us becoming a lot more competitive if we start hosting soccer tournaments, and we start hosting swim meets.
I think we can do that anyway without raising the tax, though, can't we?
Well, you couldn't host it at Browardwood Park, because the changing room is, is basically, you know, not very nice, but, but if you, if you use that money to build a soccer field and host, I mean, there, you know, when you have a soccer tournament, the whole city is gonna be full, not just Brookhaven or Shambly, they're, they're just gonna be looking for a room, period. So I think in one of these, I see the, the principle of not wanting to raise taxes, and I agree with that, but it's one of those things where, you know, we, there's definitely, the, the benefit, I think, outweighs the risk of any type of negative adverse effects.
I, I would agree with John. I, I don't know of a, of anybody who, when they, when they called to get a competitive rate for a room, says, now what is your, what is your city sales tax?
My dad would have.
Well, your dad was an exceptional human being, and we know that.
It's also the government rate, which is different, which is actually a fixed rate.
And, and you know, if you've traveled at all, that when you go to some of the large cities, they tack on.
19%.
Yeah, all kinds of rates that just, you know, that's sticker shock to me, but I, I think we also know that an awful lot of people staying in hotels are, you know, reimbursed by their businesses, they don't even, you know, their expense account, they don't really look at it. I agree with John, that we could use that money to really create some venues, to build a sports complex, to have soccer fields, which we are in desperate need of, to, to enhance our, our parks so that we can have tournaments. That's what puts heads in beds, and that's really what the hotels are asking us to do. I am very much in favor of raising it to 8%. I think it's competitive with Atlanta, with the cab, and, and I appreciate your count of the municipalities, but if you were to add up population, I think you'd be overwhelmed by the, you know, the 8%. My only hesitation is a political one. I'm not sure that we're in the good graces of the legislature right now, and I don't, I don't know that, that we should be asking, I think we need to sort of have a conversation with them before we ask them to raise our hotel motel tax.
Well, I'm not gonna ask, I mean, it's gonna have to come from, y'all need to lead the charge if y'all want to do it, but I, you know, I don't want to make a big, huge stink about it, I'm just, in principle, I just think it's easy to say, oh, it's not that big of a deal, the business, the business pays for it, not the individual. Well, then the business pays for it, and then who pays for it in the end? We do, through raising higher prices. And so it's easy for the government to take money out of people's pockets and say, oh, it's not really hurting anybody, but, you know, it's 3%, it's $3 on 100, and, you know, $30 on 1,000.
The basis of those, of your comment though, Mr. Mayor, is the money is being taken and just being put, like saying, to a general fund.
No.
And I agree with what Bates said. If we have a plan for what we're trying to do, and we can make a much more competitive Brookhaven that brings people, that makes people want to come here, they may want to bring their wedding party, they may want to bring their event, if we can utilize that money effectively, I think it behooves us to do that. I travel a lot, and I agree with what Councilwoman Rebecca here has just mentioned. I will, I'll ask about a room rate, but at the end of the day, what they tack on for, for, for taxes is always a surprise, and I have been in those 13 and 19% environments, and you never know what you're gonna get. And if you look at the list here, which ones are charging 8%? They're basically around the metropolitan area here. You've got Atlanta, you've got Decatur at 7, you've got Atlanta at, at 8, Roswell at 6, Sandy at 7. Basically, people in and around the major metropolitan areas is where this is a competitive rate. Now, I would say to council, let's come up with a good plan that if we're gonna do this, and the money is gonna be generated, let's make sure that it is being allocated towards something that will definitely enhance the heads and beds, and I think we would get full support from hotel motel industry, because they're hungry for this.
Yep, that's, my, my support of it hinges on a quid pro quo, that the tourism department produce a budget that we can, that we can see, and, and that they, that the Convention Visitors Bureau also agrees, you know, approves on their budget, so that we can see what these monies are gonna be used for.
I'd even like to see maybe just a category, a group of categories that it would be limited to, that we as council can then direct you on how those, how those funds would be distributed.
Particularly, it's on the capital, it's on the capital improvement side, that, that's where that's fairly important.
But who actually, who actually makes the decision on the spending? Is it the CBB, or is it the Recreation Authority?
Right, no, it's, first of all, the Convention Visitors Bureau is the entity that receives the 40% of the hotel motel tax. All of it is booked and deposited into our general fund, and we're projecting 1.8 million in our 2015 budget. From there, 40% is dispersed and sent to the Convention Visitors Bureau.
Okay.
So to do what you were just talking about, Bates, I can give you some general categories and prepare that, but we don't have a CB, CBB yet, and they need to prepare the budget. And then tourism reports to the CBB. They are really an arms-length agency, because their funds are very restricted and have a, a single purpose, which is to promote tourism, and, and the emphasis behind that is heads and beds. How do you get heads and beds? The hotel motel tax law allows for going up to 8%, and enables you then to create this Recreation Authority that you can pledge and use that 3% differential, or that add-on for the tax, to pledge against what you would presume to do, and that would be to float a bond, and use the 3% as a dedicated revenue stream to retire a service debt. So it enables you to be able to provide the improvements now, and pay for them through the tax collection over the term of the bond, whether that's 20 years or 30 years. Under our current situation, right now, we have our host funds that principally is dedicated to infrastructure improvement. There is very little infrastructure improvement in the operating costs of the city, it's all driven by the host funds. And you could do the same thing, you could float a bond and use host funds, but you would have to dedicate a certain percentage of those host funds strictly to the purpose of, of parks improvements. Because in order for us to get a good rate and, and get this underwritten by the bonding community, we have to show a dedicated stream. When you can segregate that 3%, which is in perpetuity, it's, it's a good source of, of revenue funds, so it's like a revenue bond, if you will, and we've got the bond experts here in, in the room. But it is a nice way to segue and segregate those funds, and not interfere with the original 40% that promotes the city. So here's what ultimately happens. Tourism promotes activities, the Recreation Authority is the foundation that provides those improvements that tourism promotes to get heads and beds.
Good.
Did we do some quick mental math or something about how much this 3%?
$54,000.
For the year, would be this 3%?
3% on top of the 1.8 that we're projecting.
Okay, so if we don't pass it this year, that's the money that we're in effect passing on. I, I would be inclined to put this off until, one, we form a CBB, we have a plan, and we come back next year to the legislature when we have a little space between us and, and other issues.
What was the number there, that you had, 15?
$54,000.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's right.
Sorry, I didn't add the other zero.
$500,000.
Thinking that's a long time to service, to herdy your bond.
It's a good bit more than that.
So it's a half a million, okay, well, I think that's a big factor then, that we would consider. So we either leave that on the, you know, we leave that on the table this year, or we, you know, we wait a year and plan, and.
You know, I, I think.
Get right with the legislature.
I mean, I, I mean, I think we've still got good relationships with the legislature.
Yeah, I, I, you know what, if it's in the benefit of Brookhaven, I would not say, well, are we in the good grace of the legislature? We have to do what's in the best interest of Brookhaven and move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that whatever that plan is, I think you get the intent that, that, you know, having a plan is, is important, so that, so that we can have that transparency to show how we're gonna utilize this money, both to the CBB industry and to our citizens, that's it.
Do you want me to come back at the next meeting and show you what those possibilities are that are already called out for in our four plans? Or what do you want to do? Just think on it and just leave it alone?
Well, I'm in support of the move to the 8%. I think the plan is whatever, you know, they're gonna have a budget, what are they gonna go do with that money? And I think that that's, that's the plan I'm looking for.
You're saying that there are already elements in the plan that could be applied?
Yes.
We know what can be done, we know that we can put this towards the North Fork, which will drive tourism, we know that we can put this towards, you know, a sports complex. I mean, it's, I mean, we don't have to go down to the 10,000 or 20,000 foot level to enact this, we can start out with a 30,000 foot level, and, and flesh it out, because it's gonna take time for this to take, come into fruition in terms of the revenues coming in, and we can, with that, with, with that expectation, we can have the planning in place. I mean, we, we know the direction that we want to go, don't we?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I think there, there are two parts to the, to the CBB. One is the capital improvements part, the other is understanding how that CBB is going to use their budget. And, you know, I think that, that while I'm, while I don't want to micromanage that, that CBB, I think it is important for us to have oversight over it, you know, to, to, to make sure that it's, you know, being utilized in a way that is going to support that industry. I mean, right now, I can, from my observation, we're making all those decisions for the CBB, because it doesn't exist yet, we're making all those decisions internally. I just want to see a plan that the industry has signed off on, that they understand and approve of the way that we're utilizing those funds. So that's, so they're really two parts. I think the capital improvement part, but then also the CBB budget part.
All right, moving on to the police report from Chief Yandura.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I think you should have a copy of the.
Just so that I'm clear, what is your direction? Do you want to hear more next time, or should I just leave it alone?
I, I had one other question. When do you anticipate that we'll create the CBB?
I'd like for you all to do that in January.
Okay, so I would say, next steps would be, let's create the CBB. Concurrent with that would be.
I'm in favor of creating the CBB.
Well, that's a step.
Just, just so you understand, it's, it's been created in your charter.
In your charter.
Right, so whatever we have to do.
So you, yeah, in other words, you. So, yeah, in other words, you wanna, you wanna activate it.
Right, it's a 501(c)(3) or some... 6(c)(f) or whatever it is.
It doesn't necessarily have to be, I mean, you can just, it doesn't necessarily have to be...
How many people, is it just one person, or is it...
Oh, no.
No, you would have a CB, CBB director, and then there's typically what you find is tourism promotion. So, you know, there are different components that staff the, the board.
Can you come back to us with a breakdown on that? What's what we're looking at from a cost standpoint?
Yes.
Personnel, salary?
Yep.
And how it will be financed?
Pardon me. Yeah, I would personally like to see us, with that plan for the CBB, we could do that in January, and flush out a little bit more in terms of the, the sort of plan that Bates is talking about. And, and then I would certainly, whatever needs to be done to entertain having the legislature introduce it this year.
That would be, it would be, I guess, it would have to be during the council meeting, you have to put it on the agenda. So then, y'all would have to vote to put it on the agenda, and then...
I'll go on record for agreeing with that statement.
Yeah, just, so...
Rebecca's statement. I'd like to move forward on this.
Is there, and there's no, is there anything that has to be acted on this before the end of the year for it to be effective?
No.
So, okay.
I just wanna ask, one, one last question, and Mr. Mayor, please take it out. We could actually be looking at this at the 50,000-foot level. We could actually be accruing funds that could be used as a foundation for a bond, to be doing a major project. I mean, for example, we know that we're looking at about $3 to $5 million for the North Fork Park. So if we were to start taking, and it was in all four comp plans, so there is justification for its economic value to the city. So if we wanted to heighten that development, we could actually be looking at taking funds like this, putting it aside, and using it as the foundation for the creation of a larger fund that could move that project along much more quickly.
Right. Let me just give you this bit of information that Ed has shared with me. For $540,000 that's generated on an annual basis, for 20 years at 3 percent would raise $8 million. That could buy your airport property and more. But I'll put something together for you at the next meeting.
That's good, powerful stuff.
All right, chief?
Okay, in response to some information requested last council meeting on, on fees for accident reports and just basically general reports, we did a survey. Currently, the city charges $5 for both accident reports and incident reports when people come to the station. Accident reports are also available through the state through a system called By Crash. And it's a state sanctioned system. That's a convenience charge, basically. We get $5 out of that, $11 also. Most of the agencies use By Crash. It eliminates a lot of problems from us as far as, we don't have to make copies of reports, send them into the state like we're supposed to. Everything's electronically sent. They keep statistics for us, so there's a lot of benefits to using that. Most of the agencies do use that as a convenience fee. I know the gentleman that came in here last week said he went to the front office to get a copy of the report. I, I attached an actual supplement to that regarding, you know, the complaint on that, so that was addressed. However, the actual reports themselves, I, I would recommend we stay with the By Crash, which is $11, and leave it all up to you as far as the incident reports. Those are all over the, the place as far as what, what place is charged. Some charge according to open records request. You know, the question was asked last week as far as a criminal case getting a copy of, say, a burglary or something like that. If the case is under investigation, the only copies that any individual would get would be the front copy and a property sheet. Leave the incident report fees up, you know, that's up in the air really, and as far as what the city wants to do. Some of the cities don't charge residents for their property sheets and their, their cover sheets.
I think that's a good policy. What do y'all think?
What's the cost of us to prevent?
What's a cover sheet? I mean, is that, is that a portion of the cost?
It just shows that a crime did happen, gives us times and dates. It's just the general public information copy. It doesn't get into the investigative part of it, because by law, the investigative part cannot be released until the case is adjudicated. If it's still an open investigation.
So I, when I looked at this, I, I really appreciated the, the write-up of the citizens issue that, that brought this to, to light, that did bring a lot of facts out about that, that really weren't discussed here. And then the officer was, has, you know, was called out on another service, and that's what...
Well, there was a pregnant lady involved.
Yeah, there was a pregnant lady, and the officer had no recall.
Just to give everybody, there was a gentleman that came in last week and was upset about the way that our police handled an accident, and then he had to pay for a report. And then when we read the chief's explanation of what happened, the situation was that there was a, an automobile accident. The, I guess, the victim, or I don't know if it's the victim, but one of the people involved in the accident, not with the party that was spoke at the podium, was a pregnant lady. And so the officer was very concerned about the pregnant lady, and apparently there was some back and forth with, while he was checking on the pregnant lady, about getting her phone number and address while he was trying to do his duty. So I don't think that our, from what the chief said, I don't think the officer did anything improper after his, is that...
Right. He was, he was actually called, in, in the meantime, to a burglary in progress, called in the same area.
Burglary as well, so...
Right. But he did comply with the request of the, all, all the people there.
Yeah. So in my analysis, reading up on it, I liked the, the proposal that Dunwoody had, where they have the exemption of, or they have, they provide a free report to the victims. And, and so there, you know, the, the thing that came to my mind is, you know, how do you define a victim? I mean, I, I don't know. That's something y'all would have to...
Well, for incident reports themselves, they have to come into the station, provide some type of ID.
Yeah.
Majority of the cases, probably 90 percent of them, your insurance company basically asks for copies of the reports.
Right.
So it's very seldom that an actual resident would come in, and if they did come in, I would recommend it. And that's what you're paying for your insurance premiums for.
Yeah. So I, I mean, the, the, in my opinion, the majority of these people, it's gonna be auto, you know, accidents. And I think that you have a large percentage of people would just rather pay the fee, get it online, not have to go to the police department.
Right.
And I don't wanna see the city having to pay $11 for every resident that, that comes through. I think that could be a cost burden. I like the idea of, of us providing free copies if they're a victim of a crime and they wanna go into the department. I also like the idea of, of Dunwoody's had a charge plus 10 cents per page, because I think it should be representative. I mean, there's an actual cost of, of producing those reports. So that was, that was my take, was go with Dunwoody's. I thought they had a reasonable, a reasonable policy. Anybody else?
Anybody else have any?
I, I, I like that.
I like that, too. I mean, I'm sympathetic to, to the guy who felt like he had already been victimized by the, by the crash, and then he had to go and, you know, pay for the report. I like waiving the fee if, if they're the victim. Otherwise, I think, you know, we've gotta stay with the, with the $5 and the $11 fees.
Yeah.
So is the delineation a, a victim or a resident of Brookhaven?
Victim.
I'd rather it be a victim.
Chief?
Is there any equal protection issue with that? Of being a vic, I mean, so what if it turns out that the victim wasn't the victim, and the other person, yeah?
I doubt if any, any person would take issue to the fact that perhaps you're not charging somebody the $5 fee. I think it would be, it would be the, to me, it would be more appropriate that if it was an indigent and didn't have the money, that would be one thing, whether it's the victim or not. I mean, I, I mean, that's pay the five bucks.
I think that, I mean, I agree with Bates and Rebecca on the, don't charge the victim, if that's the case. All right?
I agree.
Well, I guess we'd have to vote on that, or is that a...
Well, I mean, you're not, this is, this is a work session.
I know, I know, I'm saying later we have to vote on it another, or no? Or he just asking for direction, 'cause he has the power to set the...
He has the power to set, set the cost. It's his budget.
Okay.
And I think Marie was coming up with the fee schedule down the road anyway.
Okay. So we're talking about the report fees, adult entertainment fees? Were you talking about that? Who put that, who put that on the agenda?
I did.
I thought it was $10.
Any, is there, are we talking about it?
The reason for that is, we are looking at all of our fees, and beginning in January, Mr. Logan is gonna be helping us take a look at the cost analysis of fees collected to services rendered.
Right.
And because of the adult entertainment world, and we do have an adult entertainment business here, we wanted to look at our fees and, and if it was covering the, the cost of services. And so I asked the chief to look at surrounding communities to get an idea. And, and this is all part and parcel of the cost of services that our police department has to render as a result of secondary effects.
Okay. All right, so are we gonna discuss the fees, or what is it?
Yeah, the next slide will have a comparison.
He has a PowerPoint.
I'll go back up, just the second one.
What's that?
That's gonna be a video.
That's coming up next, after this. There, there's the, there's the fee schedule.
Please bring more fun videos for us, if you would.
That one's not fun, but, this is the, we checked with the local areas that have adult entertainment, and this is the fee structure, and they're, they're all over the place.
Can we enlarge that? Where's our fee?
We currently charge?
Yeah, hit that slideshow button.
We weren't charging at all, so I believe it was two, I believe it was $200, and we were still charging $40 for pouring permits. As you can see, everyone's charging different fees for everything, basically.
Are we not able to blow up that?
May get...
The Shambly is, is serving permits $50. Exotic dancers, there's no charge for the dancers, but they, they have a, they pay a tax from the year's gross revenue. Doraville basically has a serving permit of $150. There are no establishments allowed in Doraville at this time. It's still in court litigation. Clarkston alcohol serving permit, $50. Exotic dancer, $300. DeKalb, permit is $200 for serving. Dancers is 300. Atlanta was 370 for a new license, 350 for a renewal. And the exotic dancer is the same as the alcohol, so 350, 370 and 350. And then Sandy Springs has $55 for the pouring permits, and the dancers, they're not charging due to ongoing litigation.
So I'm sorry, we have been char, we've...
We have not been.
We've not been. We didn't accept, we didn't just bring over the cabs.
Until the court ruling came out, we were, we hadn't done anything there.
Didn't we indicate in our last conversations on this issue that we were going to be imposing?
Yeah, I think they expected that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why Marie has to, to come forward with a, an idea of what charges are.
Probably DeKalb County's would be a good, a good idea, I guess, if that's what they were paying before.
But we are charging for server permits, right?
I think you said...
Not yet.
Across, I mean, across all restaurants that serve alcohol?
Yes, all, all the restaurants.
And how much is that?
It's $40.
And this would be a special category, alcohol serving permit for adult or in the business.
Right.
Yeah, I think, port over to DeKalb County's, and then, you know, Marie, I would say that as we look at these costs, you know, of providing, you know, all of our fee structures across the board, if we find out that it's costing us more than this, then we look to adjust it there.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the cabs.
The cabs, I mean, just do, whatever they were doing before is what...
If I, Mayor, if I could just caution you, you are, I mean, you're voting, I mean, so...
I just asked what he thought.
Hmm?
I just asked what he thought.
I understand, but then you're going down and asking everybody else what they think. If, if just the fact that each person...
I'd like to know what they think.
Each person, each person can make their own comment.
I can ask them for input, can I? I mean, I'm asking John for input all the time. Probably getting tired of it.
My points, my point has been made.
I got your point, I got your point.
I was gonna say, just follow the cab, as we, before we started.
Tom, what do you think?
I, I have no dog in this fight.
All right. All right. DUI and crime stats update?
Okay, that's the next slide. What I did basically, that one, Kathy. What we did was I, I pulled statistics. The first time we discussed this, when we were reviewing the alcohol serving permit times, or the alcohol license times, was August 26th. So I pulled the statistics from August 26th through December 15th, and it should be 14 instead of 11. But total incidents we handled during that time was 1,626. And then what I did was I compared that and pulled out the incidents that we had, and it goes down the whole column from 2:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the morning. So out of the 1,626, we've had 199 incidents. Total arrests, 368. From 2 to 6, we had 85 citations, ordinance violations. The officers wrote 3,673 violations. 189 were between 2 and 6. Accidents, 558. Between 2 and 6, we had 38. And total DUIs, 38 during that two-month period, and 14 of those were from 2 to 6. The thing to keep in mind with those statistics is the, most of the cases handled from 2 to 6 are, are time-consuming cases, where they're more serious. And I'll give you some examples. We've had two recent ones at Rush Lounge, where we weren't actually called to Rush Lounge. We were called to Northside Hospital for one, and I believe...
Why do we keep hearing about Rush Lounge?
It seems like most of the incidents we're, we're having there. The next slide actually has some, I broke down some of the different locations. There, we'll, we'll go over that then. Those are the incident locations, and as you can see, most of those are open at night, so all those take place at night. I didn't break that down from 2 to 6 or whatever, but Don Pollo, 10, it goes down. Rush had 21, which is double, you know, the next lowest one.
We've got Don Pollo on there twice.
There?
Yeah.
Okay, that was an oversight.
That's 20.
Well, the, but Rush Lounge, I gave it, as I was mentioning, we, we had two cases there where we were actually called to hospitals rather than the location. One involved a person that was beat up pretty severely, and another one was involved a stabbing. We've had cars stolen there, all kinds of incidents. The last one we'll show you in a little bit is, is actually a, a video from patrons that left Rush Lounge, and, and we ended up with a gang fight across the street. And what I'm trying to just show is the manpower that it takes to handle some of these calls. Another couple of things we've had during the past couple of weeks is we had a, an officer was handling an accident. It was a DUI accident where the car was, was totaled, basically. Person was injured. He was standing behind the incident with his, I think this was on Briarwood just before Northeast Expressway. He was just protecting the scene with his lights going, while our officer was rear-ended while he was sitting in the car by another drunk driver. Car sustained some major damage. We're still waiting for the adjuster to, to get the okay for the repairs on that. But that just gives you, you know, an idea of what, what goes on at that time.
Let me ask you, Rush Lounge, out of all those, that's the one that stays open the latest of any of them, is it not?
Generally...
They, they take advantage of the latest hours they can, I think. Is that correct? Or Don Pollo, too, maybe?
Don, Don Pollo is Rush, actually Cream.
Cream, too?
Atlanta Peach Ballroom stays open quite a bit, too. And Icon Lounge has been, but they, they had a burglary where a lot, some of their TVs were stolen, so they, they were down for a little bit, and I think they lost their promoter for a while.
Whoever knew that ballroom dancing was so, was so dangerous? Ballroom dancing in the land beach.
What exactly qualifies as an incident? Is it a, it's just a call, the police are called, or...
No, incidents, these are actually reports, mainly criminal, criminal reports.
Car stolen, bar fight?
Lot of more thefts, fights, batteries. I think one of them was an aggravated assault with a gun. A person was shot in the parking lot of Icon Lounge. And most of those actually have officers that are assigned to them. You know, the two, we actually had people assigned at Rush Lounge. We didn't know what went on until we got called from the hospital. At one of the incidents, the officer saw a group of people run out and go to their cars, and they took off, but he had no idea that there was a fight took place or anyone was stabbed.
Are these the only places you've had... Are these the only places you've had calls for service, or are any other late-night establishments have had calls for, like Kaleidoscope, or any of the restaurants, or?
No, and I tried to include, like, I put in Pub 71, Baton Ball, that whole strip mall there. You know, Pub 71, those incidents were-
Daytime?
Yeah, they're, they're all daytime, most of them were accidents or-
Car break-ins?
Not, not there, or Pub 71, yes, you're correct.
They have a lot of car break-ins.
Those were all car break-ins, basically. One was information for an officer, Baton Ball had one, one incident, and that was something minor, miscellaneous incident.
One missing in there. Wasn't there an incident on November 4th?
Where?
At Town Brookhaven.
I mean, at, like-
There could have been, I just pulled the ones that we had most of the problems with.
Whole block dog, or something like that?
Just kind of curious.
Or there?
Yeah.
There, were you involved?
For the record, it happened after I left.
Okay, alright.
When you have an incident, like, in the parking lot of Pub 71, how do you assign that? Could it be Hudson's, could it be Pub 71?
Mellow Mushroom?
Could it be Sugar Shack? I mean, how do you assign that?
We actually get the name of the establishment, the call goes to Chatcom, Chatcom dispatches it to the officer on that beat, if he's not available, he signs it to the next beat, and then we respond to that location.
I mean, so, I mean, if it's a car break-in, that's what he's saying-
It's a car break-in, they'll still give a description of the car, I mean, they get all that information.
But that's a shared parking lot, I'm on like six establishments, that's what he's saying.
Right, we've had some issues there, the cameras are actually owned by Mellow Mushroom, and we were getting a little bit of a problem, I think we're working it out, but they didn't want to provide any of the video surveillance if it wasn't a customer theirs.
Wow.
So they'll get assigned the responsibility, that makes total sense.
They have the only cameras, and those cameras grain, all you see is grain, there's really no resolution to those cameras.
Alright.
We know that for a fact.
We've made a number of arrests there, but these are just things that go on. And finally, Kathy, go to the last one, this is a video we pulled, took place, actually it's on their September-
Gas station?
22nd, yeah, this is a Shell station right across from Rush, and this took place at 4:10 in the morning.
Top left of the screen?
Yeah. And this is a group just left Rush, and you'll end up seeing, we weren't called till this, till after they left, so there was no one there when we got there, but if an officer would have pulled up on this, this would have taken a minimum of three or four officers to, I mean, it got pretty ruddy. Luckily, no one was hurt that we were aware of, but they really start beating up somebody in, twice. And this is good video surveillance from the Shell station that had it. You see, they go towards the end of the parking lot, and that's when the fight really starts, and then another car pulls in and they all leave. But somebody's actually down on that when they were kicking. That's just a lot of the things that go on at, at night after some of, some of these clubs close. I think that's when they call the police.
By his bailing, yeah.
And that's it, the other thing that I wanted to mention, just, just so you're aware, is we're averaging about 150 calls, this was on another slide, about 150 calls for service, and that's basically any calls, that could be from a house check to a traffic stop, not necessarily an incident that are serious like these, that's per day, per 24-hour period, so that would equate to roughly about 54,000 calls for service a year.
Alright.
It's pretty active.
That slide up here, we had asked you previously to sort of give us an assessment of the incidents between 2 and 6 a.m.
Those are all the, that's the whole column on the right side.
So, does it continue to sort of just the same volume, has it gone up, has it gone down, is it-
It's about the same that it's been before, because we haven't really changed the hours yet either.
Could you give us a report in the future, before the hours change, about from 3 to 6?
Sure.
Because that would be, I think, 2:55 is what our hours are going to be.
And I did pull some statistics too, because if we end up, there's, there's actually a lot more drunks that we arrested if you go till 7 or 8 o'clock in the morning.
Really?
And I'm sure that's partially, you know, the result of staying open till 4 o'clock or whatever, too.
Yeah, say 3 to 7 instead of 2 to 6, that might be, give us a different perspective.
Sure.
Alright, last thing, got a note here about mail theft, we've been hearing a little bit about theft from people's mailboxes, do you have any information on that, or?
Yes, I actually pulled things, we've had the mail thefts, we've been going to all the HOA, all the neighborhood meetings and everything, and telling people, please watch your, your neighbors' mailboxes, if you have something delivered to your own house and it's of value, you know, make sure it's, it's delivered to an occupied house or your business. We did pull the thefts for the last two months, because evidently, I know Councilman Park said that there's been an increase in the blogs, I guess, of people complaining. We've had 152 thefts, total thefts throughout the city for the last two months, out of those 152, only four mail thefts, and the fourth one was actually reported today off of Caldwell, a gentleman found some of his mail in his neighbor's yard, and we only had one report of stolen box delivery. You know, and I did check, UPS probably has maybe five to eight trucks in our area, FedEx has a number of trucks, DHL, the post office, everyone's delivering, and so it's impossible to catch them without the help of the residents keeping their eyes open.
So you're saying there might be some mail thefts occurring that aren't being reported?
Right.
Right, okay.
And, and to be honest with you, around Christmas time, it always happens, and, and when social security checks are delivered, it always happens, all our officers are mindful of that.
And the dates on the social security checks being delivered is?
I'll have to check, we put out the times, it's Thursday, usually, I can't remember for sure.
It's the first of the month.
It'd be good to have that announcement out so people know.
Thank you, Chief, anybody else say anything? Alright, thank you, Chief. Alright, pre-regular meeting agenda review? We've got to scoot along here.
Okay. Consent agenda, six items on the agenda. We do have a mutual release settlement agreement, Confetti's and Rush, and the city attorney will discuss that with you, the others are just meeting minutes, and we do have the requirement to, to sign our local maintenance and improvement grant with DOT, we're required to get that into them before the end of the month, so it is critical that that be approved.
Okay.
As far as the settlement agreements with Confetti and Rush, it was stemmed from the fact that the alcohol board found for the suspension of a license based upon the hearing that took place, in both instances, they filed a writ of certiorari in the Supreme Court, and as we had discussed with you in executive session before, there were some procedural issues, and it was our opinion that we would end up losing in that, and that, based upon that, we would suggest that they agree to dismiss the civil action, and we in turn would release them associated with that one instance-
Right.
-with which they were charged.
Right.
Both cases.
We've got a different procedure on that now, okay?
Yes, and I believe we have pending cases coming up too for serving of minors that were in addition to those original charges.
Have the same procedural issue?
No.
Okay, alright.
And same clubs, or different ones?
One of them was the same, I'm not sure of the other one.
Alright. Okay.
Okay, no announcements, but under reports, we do have commendations for officers, also Joe Esti, as you all requested at the last meeting, attend our meeting to give you an update on Chatcom, and then-
What were we going to ask him about specifically, I thought there was some issue-
We were talking to him about collecting that 911, and he has been in contact with my staff, actually with Rick Stone, who is managing that for me, and also there's a vendor that's going to be able to help us with this too.
Okay.
He's also going to talk to you about how the carriers were notified prior to going live.
Okay.
Okay, then you have reappointments and appointments for your boards and commissions, it is an action item, as well as the appointment to the MARTA Transit Oriented Development Committee. I will mention, if I may, today I had a meeting with MARTA and was informed that the original RFQs that were received, which were eight of them, seven of which were reviewed, this was about six weeks ago, the attorney for MARTA has decided to throw them all out, the staff was in the middle of requesting proposals, cost proposals from four of them, and has since decided, because of a technicality in the language of the RFQ, that they be thrown out and they restart, so they will be giving notice to the public in the next few weeks, calling for qualifications for the TOD at the Brookhaven Station. That will probably take another month to review, and then to get the technical committee back together, and then that will be shortlisted, and then MARTA will reach out for cost proposals from there. But that's no reason to stop the appointment of the committee, just to give a-
Have all those names, we'll have a, okay.
So, the finalized list, well, well, I think we still have two slots open, has been sent to the mayor and council. Just to give the public an understanding of what this is, MARTA, MARTA is the owner of the property at the Brookhaven MARTA Station, and they will be making a petition eventually to the city for rezoning and development of the MARTAs, they are focused on transit-oriented, transit-oriented design. There have been charrettes that have taken place, that were done, that had lots of public involvement, but it is my hope that we continue this public involvement, and in order to do that, we've set up a citizens advisory committee that MARTA has agreed will be utilized as a sounding board for the developers who are interested in, in developing at the Brookhaven MARTA Station. We've set that up with one representative of each council district, plus the mayor, that's five positions, we also have a representative of each of the neighborhoods that is surrounding, or adjacent to the MARTA Station, that's historic Brookhaven, Brookhaven Fields, Brookhaven Heights, and Ashford Park, and then we have a representative of the BPCA, which is Brookhaven P Street Corridor Alliance, that support the development in the overlay area, and a representative of the, or two representatives of our city's development authority, because the development authority may be involved, or may be asked to be involved in the development of the MARTA Station. So, the intent of this board is to continue to allow our citizens to have a representative voice in this process, which ultimately is, is a function of MARTA, since they are the owner of the property and the applicant. But MARTA is very interested in making sure that our citizens' concerns are heard, and this board was a good tool for us to utilize to keep us involved in this process in advance of their making application for rezoning to the city. So, thanks Marie for helping set that up and coordinating that with MARTA, MARTA has seems very interested in this, in this ability to interact with our citizens, so hopefully once we get direction from MARTA, we'll get this group together and, and talk about, you know, what the interests are for the city.
Right.
Thank you, Marie, too, and thank you Bates for kind of heading this up, I know this is in your district, right? Yeah, so Bates has been kind of leading the charge on the citizens committee, it was his idea to do that, I think it's a great idea, so I'm happy to move along on that. Alright, old business?
Old business is the 2015 budget, and I'm happy to introduce you all to Mr. Rob Logan, who I have had the pleasure of working with for a number of years. He is the current city manager for the city of Holly Springs, also their CFO, and he has been assisting me in the mid-year budget adjustment, and now for the 2015 budget. He has been working with our finance staff and has been serving as the quasi-interim finance director. He's going to go into, if we could put that up on the screen, I wanted to just give you just some, I guess, housekeeping notes, so that there's an understanding of what is actually before your consideration for approval this evening, and what supplementary material is available for your edification, and to assist you in understanding what you will see as gross numbers or total numbers. The document that is on the screen is the actual budget, that is what is, we are requesting your consideration for approval. At the last meeting, you asked for the backup sheets, the worksheets, and these are those sheets that have some highlights in, in yellow, and it's broken down with each department, and also show, for the expenditures, it also shows the anticipated revenues, and then it also shows the fund accounts, which we are getting such as stormwater utility, the host funds, so, and tourism, hotel motel tax. So, again, this is the document that's being approved, this is the document, the backup sheets, that is just there for your understanding of how we arrived at, at these total numbers. Couple of things I want to make you aware of, so that as you deliberate on this, you understand what the, the full scope of the, the numbers mean, and when Rob finishes, I might add a few items, perhaps, if, if we didn't cover those fully. First of all, the salaries that are shown in each of the departments include a 3% increase. So those numbers are already factored into the total salary, so that is something that you may want to have discussion on and, and deliberate on. I will tell you that the cost of living increase for social security is 1.5%, and we are recommending a 3% increase. The budget also takes-
We talked about that, you and I, and I think council might have some interest in, until we have our policy on how we're going to handle the raises-
Right.
Putting it in contingency possibly, and then addressing it after the first of the year?
Right, we did, the only hesitancy I have on, on doing that is, the contingency account is different than our other accounts that you find in, in the worksheets, because in, within a budget, we, I can, I have the authority to move money up and down, as long as I'm not increasing the total bottom line number, because that takes council action. Contingency is, is a little different, when you start pulling money out of that, I need to come back to you all to get that approval. So, I'm a little cautious on every time an employee is due for an increase, that we would have to each time come back and amend the budget for that.
I don't think that's what we, I think we were just going to have the, a policy on it, and then-
Okay.
You wouldn't have to go back, it'd be put back into the budget.
Okay.
I think that's, is that-
Okay, well, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay. We don't want to get into a situation where that's the case.
Correct.
But moving it to contingency for that purpose, I think we should do.
Right, alright, the budget also takes into consideration the hiring of a full-time fire marshal, right now, we are in a governmental agreement with the city of Decatur, that's working extremely well, but our fire marshal, when he's here, is extremely busy, and we can see that this position needs to be full-time, and we believe, and I do, that the fees that we will collect for the fire plan review will, will cover the costs in addition to the building permit fees that we expect to cover. With this caveat, please, I do want to come back and share with you in the next couple of months, with Rob's help, where we audit all of our fees, and how we relate the fees collected to the actual service rendered. Remember, we are primarily a vendor-oriented operation, and there are markups on the vendor fees and chargeouts, so we have to accommodate for that, and I can tell you right now that the fee structure we have does not cover that, the general fund has to subsidize that. The other thing that this current budget includes is our current vendors, as you know, we have solicited for proposals, we have received them, I've had staff assist me in interviewing different vendors of interest, we have not awarded any of the contracts, we're working with the city attorney's office, we have given notice to the current vendors that their contract is extended to the end of January, because I wanted to be sure I understood what funds we had to work with them, but I can tell you that the funds that I've included for contract services is at the highest range, meaning that I don't expect, and through our negotiations, that it will be higher than that, in fact, I can tell you it will not be higher than that, I expect it to be a little lower than that, and it is my intent to notify the shortlisted candidates so that we can enter into negotiations by the end of this week, following the hopeful adoption of the, the budget. Couple of other things that I want to point out to you, especially for the public, so that they're clear, because you will see some increases in some of the overall department budgets. One of those is mine, in the city managers' department, because it's no longer just myself any longer. It is the full-time complement of the assistant city manager. If you'll recall, Ms. Cannon has been shared predominantly by community development, and now she is exclusively in the city manager's suite, so that's 100% of her time. We have an executive assistant that serves me, as well as the mayor and council, so that is shared. There's half the cost of that executive assistant that is out of the mayor and council's budget, and the other half is borne by the city manager's budget. I've also moved the HR director into the city manager's department, whereby he is there full-time, and then we have an administrative assistant that serves the assistant city manager, as well as the HR director. So, we have grown-
Where did HR go before?
HR was in finance and administration.
Oh.
So, we now have five, five employees, including myself, in the city, actually, four and a half, in the city manager's budget. It does also, the budget includes and accommodates the additional hiring of officers pursuant to the annexation that took place. Please be mindful that the $342,500 that CHOA has agreed to pay, which we've not yet received, but I'm hopeful we'll get that here shortly, that money is the advance to cover a portion, proportionate share of the cost necessary to service the new annexed area. The other half of that, matching that 342.5, will come through a special tax district, which is on your agenda for later this evening. We will be advancing that with a TAN, a tax allocation note, in addition to funds that we will be doing in addition to that TAN, the TAN that would take care of our operations for the first few months of the city, because remember, I've informed you that the bulk of our funds come in at the end of the year, so they're coming in now. So what we're budgeting for, we don't receive those funds until the end of the year, except for Georgia Power. We do get Georgia Power at the end of February, so it's important that we have this TAN, and as we build up our reserve over the years, you know, we're going to get out of the business of doing a TAN. It's my hope that next year we will be, and that's what we're working for. So, the police department includes, chief, help me with my memory, nine officers. Five officers are coming from the annexation area, and four officers are coming for the Buford Highway Squad, two of which are being funded by the Pink Pony. However, that funding only comes in quarterly, so again, the necessity for a TAN to be able to cover those costs, and then we will take those funds that have been committed through the agreement of the Pink Pony and service that debt. As you know, for a TAN, we have to pay that off in the year that we take it out, and we will be taking that out in January. Let me just go quickly through before I turn this over to Rob. Another thing that you're going to see, especially in our revenues, I'm very excited to share with you, that our property tax looks to be of an increase. We're looking, projecting at $6.1 million. We're being very conservative on that figure. I believe it will be higher, but I want to see what our digest looks like from the county when we get that in June. So, six point, that's real property tax. We're also showing, for the first time, our motor vehicle tax title ad valorem. We're projecting $150,000. That's a new revenue for us. You'll notice, too, that our franchise tax is up. That includes other franchise fees that we anticipate, but also it anticipates the collection of those fees that have yet to be paid. So that's why you're showing and seeing a percent change of a minus 32, because we're collecting in the rears, and we will not collect that same value or that amount in the coming year, but we will collect an amount of $2.6 million. And again, we think that that's conservative, especially now. I will tell you that we're working aggressively in our GIS department and community development department to gather all the addresses for the annexed area, so we can notify Georgia Power before the end of the month, as well as Comcast, AT&amp;T Video, AGL, all of the franchise holders, so that we can have those addresses confirmed at the end of this month, so we can collect that during 2015. I think that gives you a highlight on what's new and a little bit different, but much improved, and we are following the chart of accounts. We have gone through an old system that we've been operating under for the last two years to our Tyler software, which is ENCODE. Everything is factored by account numbers, and so it will be much cleaner for me to be able to track that. So, without any further delay, I'll turn that, the rest, over to Rob.
Thank you, Marie. One thing that I want to add to what she just said is the conversion of your general ledger software to the Tyler Technologies ENCODE. When you look at the comparison to the 2014 revenues and expenditures, you're going to see some differences, and part of that is because we pulled the information off your previous general ledger system. The previous system did not have the capability to fully implement the Georgia Uniform Chart of Accounts. The software that you approved in August of last year has that capability, so what we've been able to do is actually fully implement the Georgia Uniform Chart of Accounts. So we tried to put those in line items and compare them as best we could, so when you do look at that, you're going to see some unusual variances, but the totals, and the totals by department is what you're actually going to be approving tonight, so that's what's important. And as Marie said, the general fund for this year, the proposed budget is $20,044,000, which is a slight reduction from the 2014 amended budget of 2.41%. The first two pages here are just a summary of your revenues, broken down by category and by type, and there's a pie chart that shows those by percentage of total. And as Marie said, some of these revenues, because of Brookhaven being a new city, you don't act, you haven't actually collected some of those revenues. You will be collecting those in 2015, but those will be attributable to 2014, so those will have to be taken back when we do our year-end at 2014. The next page that you have is your summary of expenditures by governmental activity, also balances back to your revenues, $20,044,000, and this breaks down by governmental activity type. There's a pie chart there that breaks that down as well. And after the summary, what we did is we actually did a line item budget for you to look at, and as I said, there are going to be some variations, and that's just because of the conversion from the old software to the new software. Next year, it will be very clean. It will be line to line, so that you shouldn't see some of these variations that you saw this year. Are there any questions about the general fund budget before we go on to the smaller funds?
Just a quick one.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure I'm totally following. You're saying that property taxes were up this year?
Mm-hmm.
You said 6.1, but that's what is being shown on the 2014 budget.
Correct, 5.9, thank you.
And one thing that you will note is, in the new software, it's broken down by category, by personal, public utility, so it's broken down more.
Oh, so previously, these two items underneath-
It was lumped together, and there was a lot of that, and what the staff did when they tried to input the old data into the new software, they tried to break it down as best they could.
Okay.
So there are variances, but the totals balance and agree. So there are a few variances in that regard.
But the bottom line, when you go down to the $20 million-
Yes.
So, we're actually down from last year?
We actually budgeted less expenditures this year, and we've been very conservative on the revenues, because we do have franchise fees and other fees that will be applied back to the 2014 year, to the current year. They won't be collected until next year, but they're attributable to 2014. And you may collect more than we budgeted on the property taxes. We're just being conservative in that regard, because we do have a copy of the tax digest, and it's more than that, but we just wanted to be conservative.
So, I had a few comments about the general fund budget.
Yes, sir.
More, these are suggestions for improvement.
Yes, sir, and I think that you might have had the worksheets. Did you have-
Yeah, the worksheets, right, right.
And so, what you actually had, I think, maybe were the work papers, which is what that we were using when we compiled this document, and I'm not certain, but what was emailed to me was the worksheet.
Yeah, yeah, so they're all the worksheets, but basically, and the worksheets are how you compiled this master document, right?
Yes.
So it's just a transfer.
Correct.
So, you know, the, you know, I think that the intent is ultimately to be as transparent as possible with-
Correct.
-this budget to our citizens. And so, when you look at this, I'm looking at it from the eyes of a resident who might pick this thing up and say, well, how can, you know, how can I follow the money trail and what's the accounts? I understand that we've got, you know, a lot of the issues that I have questions about are a result of that switch from the old accounting system to Tyler. So you've got some shifting of things. But I would, just a couple high-level suggestions to make. You have a variance from prior year, and we've got a column in all the worksheets of 2014 amended budget and 2015 proposed, the variance, the, on the revenue side of the variances, you show, you know, reductions in revenue as a negative number, and then that percentage is the same, in a positive and negative. On the expense side, you show it as a reduction in the expense as a negative, actually as a positive number.
Yeah, that's right.
And that may be a function of Tyler accounting software, but a-
Reduction of the expenditure is actually an increase, so I mean, it balances out? Is that what you're asking?
So, I'm trying to say, so let's take an example. So, if you have the salaries of mayor and council, you have a 2014 budget of $63,000 goes up, and 2015 proposed a $91,000, and yet the variance shows it is a decrease of $28,000. To someone just reading it, I would say, look, we went up to $90,000, we increased $28,000. That should be shown as a positive, and the resulting percentage change would be a 44% increase. And so, just a suggestion, that may be a function of software reporting, but I think-
No, I get it.
-for people, you know, if your expense increased, it'd be nice to show you've got a positive.
Right.
The other, the other issues, you know, some of the questions, I think that as we look to report these things, I'd like for us to, you know, to try and itemize some of these things in the departments, not by name of personnel, but possibly by salaries, if you have administrative assistant and things like that, defining how that's broken out, because most people looking at this would say, mayor and council, you've got salaries increase of $30,000, pretty much. Did the mayor and council give themselves a raise? You know, so identifying some of those key points that I think-
Sure.
-will help prevent people's questions in the future. And I can work directly with Marie, because I don't think these things are material to the approval of the budget. They're just a transparency and clerical thing.
Yeah, I would like to have a nice, after we, some of these clarifications get made in the next week or two, to have something bound nicely and to present, and to give folks next year, in the beginning of the year, and to have online, if we could do that.
Yeah.
Because these things are, you know, we've got to look at it from a layman's term, and base is exactly right. I mean, you're going to see mayor and council salaries and wages, $30,000 more dollars, would they give themselves a raise? And you're not, and you're going to see columns that weren't, didn't exist before, professional purchased services was zero one year, and now it's 125, and I just, you just have to, we need some explanation from a layman's perspective.
Yeah, and I think that that's, you know, putting in that effort now will help address these concerns to, you know, trying to respond-
Before they come, start brewing up.
From our constituents, when they said, please explain how you got this number.
We can do that. Let me also tell you what I'm working with, with a vendor right now, and that is to prepare an annual report for 2014, which will come out in the spring. It will look very much like, you know, reports that you get from publicly traded companies that will show staffing levels, it will show salaries, it will show accomplishments, it's going to show what our assets are, and so it will capture everything that's in this budget. So that is being worked on, but from what I understand from you, mayor, that in the interim, we need to have this bound, and we have to have some more footnotes in it, and that's fine, we can do that.
Footnotes and just, you know, not just footnotes, but like, when you say salaries and wages-
Right.
-it needs to show what it's, you know-
Yes, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, exactly.
And if that can be, we have that in a couple of weeks to present, because I'd like to let people know that, you know, we understand that some of these are necessity for the software and what your, what the process of accounting is, but we'd really like to eliminate lots of questions, because there are going to be lots of questions about this, because it's confusing in some places, and we just want to make sure that we have something ready, that we can tell people, we're going to be giving you something that explains more thoroughly, in a more layman's term, what these mean.
Yeah, we can do that.
I would appreciate that.
Well, that's one of the constraints of chart of accounts.
Right.
Governmental accounting, so that's, you know, it goes into lump sums, but we can provide that level of detail.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that we'll find that in the report, you mentioned like a publicly traded company, a lot of those details are in that asterisk section that you've got at the bottom of your annual report. So, for most of these categories, we have, as we did last year, sort of asterisks, you know, where things could be clarified, you know, like, people look at, you know, $100,000 technical services line item, and they say, well, what is that? You know, if it's a function of, you know, the municipal court, what is, what is that? Well, that's the contract with, you know, maybe that's the software vendor that they use. So, I can, I'd love to work with you to help that, because that's basically the notes that I was sending out today, was just those kind of clarifications.
Well, within that timeframe, too, in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, we will be back. I know I will be back in the first meeting in January to share with you the contracts for the vendors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have a good time and have it all together.
Right, so then we can identify who the vendors are.
Now, this is a little bit outside the scope of this discussion, but will we be looking at producing an income statement for the city at the end of 2014 that shows, you know, actual expenses as what we had?
Well, we won't be able to do that at the end of this month, well-
No, no, I know.
-because we have to reconcile all of our accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's part of the standard thing that we're going to be doing.
Yeah, we can provide that.
And then-
If you can just be patient and allow us to-
Yeah, I can be patient on that one.
It probably could be February, because of all of the billing that's still coming in.
Yeah, and then I think as part of that financial presentation of the past year, it would be nice to present actual cash balances on accounts that, you know, that show, you know, what's our carryover of our reserve fund, or what's our carryover from stormwater fund, because these numbers that we have in this budget are just looking at the 2015 numbers.
Right.
And I think as we start to accrue some of these balances, it'd be nice in that year-end reporting to show what those-
Right, well, I can tell you off the top of my head, host is zero for 2014.
Got a lot of nice new roads out there, though.
Yes, we did, but there are, there are some carryover accounts, funds that we will have out of those other accounts.
Yeah.
So we can show you that.
Yep.
All right, and we can talk more about this in the regular meeting as well, but thanks, thanks Bates and Marie and Rob. Did you have-
Um, did you want me to go through the other, the small funds as well?
Um, we have, we can, can we do that in the regular meeting?
Sure.
Would that be okay? Okay, all right, let's just do that at the regular meeting, and we'll move on to the-
Okay. All right. There will be a resolution for your consideration, should you wish to move forward to adopt. All right, item number two, RZ 13-11, John Hancock Life Insurance Company, Mr. Song can present that, as well as, that also goes with three and four, doesn't it, Ben?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think everyone's aware with Asher Green, they have requested deferral another 60 days to the February 24th meeting.
All right, number three.
They're all, they're all-
Two, three, and four are all related.
Two, three, and four are all together.
Yeah, so for items two, three, and four, oh, sorry, yes, two, three, and four, they have requested deferral.
All right, five.
Five, quickly, it's a request from OI to OI, it's an existing OI piece of property that was conditioned previously to Skyland Trail coming in and purchasing the lot, essentially they want to utilize the space for an accessory parking lot that would support their existing campus, so they had to essentially come in and change the conditions, we treated as a new rezoning.
This is the place off of Druid Hills, it's kind of sandwiched between Druid Hills and Buford Highway, right?
Actually, it's at the corner of North Druid Hills and Childers.
Okay.
Childers, Childers.
Okay.
Childers. So initially, you know, they were, they had a curb cut on North Druid Hills, they had another curb cut on Childers as the original site plan that was approved. What they're doing is eliminating both curb cuts, utilizing the existing curb cuts that, curb cut that Skyland Trail is, currently has in place.
So, okay, all right.
All right, so that's five.
And all those have five, one, and two?
Well, that's five, one. Five, two is the Hastings property, or better known as Hastings property. They have requested a 60-day deferral. Unfortunately, the planning commission only has the ability to grant a 30-day, so they have recommended a request for deferral. So they have recommended a request for deferral to the city council, because that council has the ability.
Who's the vote on that, do you know?
Oh, it was unanimous in terms of the deferral.
Okay, all right.
Because it was an agreement in place between the applicant as well as the property owners.
I had a question, you know, because I'd, I'd like to oblige the applicant on their request to defer to the February meeting. So the motion would be to, do I need to state date specifics on those February dates?
Well, yeah, you can state February and to be remanded back to the planning commission.
Right.
That date would be February 4th.
For, for?
For planning commission, and then February 24th for city council.
Okay.
All right. For three?
Item three, it's the Kroger request for an accessory fuel center. They have requested to withdraw without prejudice. The planning commission did review and they held a public hearing. They unanimously voted to deny the requested fuel station.
They denied the request for deferral?
Well, they didn't consider technically the request for deferral.
Okay, all right.
They acted on the request.
So if they didn't consider the act, the request for deferral, then we are not to consider a request for deferral, are we?
You don't necessarily have to, but the request is out there. The request has been made by the applicant.
Is that what we're being presented tonight, a request for deferral?
Correct. Sorry, sorry, not defer, withdrawal without prejudice.
Mm-hmm.
Again, the same request was made to the planning commission.
Okay.
The planning commission decided to recommend denial instead of proceeding with the request from the applicant.
Okay.
The applicant has reaffirmed their request to withdraw.
Okay.
So, so the options are to either deny, the options are either deny or accept a deferral without prejudice?
Actually, no. Richard helped me remember.
This, this is the one, Ben.
This is for the slop, right.
This is a slop, the planning commission does not have the power to accept a withdrawal of a slop. So they're requesting withdrawal. Because the planning commission didn't have that power, they recommended that it be denied. And so you vote approve, deny, or allow withdrawal.
Okay.
Right, there was a mix-up in that the, when it, it's an actual rezoning, they have the ability. That language was unfortunately not included for special land use permit applications. And that's why they had to act on it.
All right. Okay.
Okay, that's number three. Four, it's a request for a late night establishment. It's an existing Lips restaurant. They would like to include one additional showtime, I believe, beginning at 11:30 and ending.
12:30.
At 1:00 PM.
1:00 AM?
Yeah, oh, sorry, 1:00 AM. They would like to essentially, the condition specifically provided by staff, and it was part of the information provided by Lips, is to complete all operations by 2:00 AM.
Yeah.
I, I thought we did away with slops for late night entertainment.
Not yet, that was still under consideration. We were still looking into that aspect to see how we were gonna move forward. We're still researching and we're gonna bring that before your, the council's attention, hopefully in January or February, just because of the annexation and the amount of work that went into it.
What did staff recommend on that?
Lips, we recommended approval, considering that the only residential per se, that's the closest residential component, is right across the street from Beaufort Highway.
All right.
Obviously, it's adjacent to Wells Fargo and some other businesses.
And I'll, we've never gotten noise complaints out of Lips or anything.
No, we've confirmed that, that there aren't, there weren't any noise complaints.
No arrests or anything on there? Okay.
Well, they arrested somebody, it might have been Liza Minelli, you're not really sure.
Yeah. Yeah, let's see some mugshot.
Sure. There's a.
All right, well, thank you. Next, old business?
Yes, ordinance 2014-1107, these are the ordinances that you held from the last meeting, public health of code of ordinances. And Laura has that.
On the smoking and stuff?
Yes, yes, it's, it's the.
Did you come up with something?
It's the Clean Indoor Air Act, and we submitted two different versions at the request of council, one containing e-cigarettes, one containing without, and also incorporating the changes from council's last meeting as well.
Okay. We'll discuss that tonight, that's not too difficult, we already kind of hashed that one out. All right. Wreckers, you wanted to withdraw that one?
Table it, please.
Table it, okay.
You want to make a decision on which one of those two ordinances we're gonna?
We can't decide that right now. It's, I don't really.
So we would have to just make a motion citing whichever one?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
The freedom one or the big government one?
So, or the healthy one or the unhealthy one, right?
That's right.
Freedom of choice.
Oh, my gosh.
Stuff it, we're a big brother. Consideration, uh, no, ordinance on fire prevention?
Yes, we have prepared a, a draft for your review of the fire.
Oh, these are, oh, these are the first drafts?
Well, it, to be.
We said we're tableing records, right?
Correct.
Okay.
To be voted on tonight, this is the Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance. It has been forwarded to the City of Brookhaven's Fire Marshal for his review. His comments have been incorporated to this version that was circulated, and it was also circulated to DeKalb County. We anticipate that we may receive some additional comments in the future.
Okay, all right. These are not for adoption tonight though, right?
The fire is, yes, the fire.
Then why were we adopted if you might receive some additional comments from DeKalb County?
The reason it's being adopted is that it is, it is one of those ordinances that are required for you to adopt, just like these ordinances.
So we can amend it if we get some comments?
We can amend it if one wants to get, and we've advised the county of that.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
All right. Uh, see, all these are kind of a similar, okay, all right. One, two, three, four, five and six, kind of housekeeping type of things that we have to do and we can change later for, okay, all right.
I've got two, your honor. I've got two, three and, two, three and four are ordinances that are all somewhat related. This is chapter 14. These are the remaining portions of chapter 14 that we have not adopted yet. The first one's just definitions. The second one is the land development permit for land disturbance activity. And the third one, or the fourth one on your agenda, is the design standards for subdivision. If you recall, we just adopted the plating process to approve a plat for subdivision. This is how the actual subdivision can be developed.
Okay.
I had, did have one question on, on, it was subdivisions. So, so we've got, I guess.
That's a rough song, isn't it?
Four, we've got item four. And I noticed, I wanted us to make sure that we were aligning this ordinance with the potential complete streets program that we're gonna be looking to adopt, because it does speak to the requirements about paving and bikes and sidewalks and things like that.
We hadn't agreed to adopt it.
I know, I know.
Complete streets. You just tried to stink that in there.
And pending approval, how about that?
I do believe all of these are, may be amended in the future, especially with the new zoning ordinance, they may need to be changed. And this may be something that we look into as well.
So.
The streets speak primarily towards public versus private streets, to making sure that the private streets meet the standards of a public street.
Yep.
Bennett might could speak a little bit more on it, but.
Yeah, there's only substantive change with regard to public versus private street is that the DeKalb ordinance referred to planning commission involvement and approving private streets, and we've deleted that. But private streets are to meet the same standards as public streets, basically to paraphrase the ordinance. Emily, we did add the provision for a setback for new streets from residentially zoned property, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, there is a provision that, that we have added in here, recommended, that basically states that the minimum required right-of-way for new streets shall be located at least 50 feet from any adjoining peripheral property ri, property line adjoining residentially zoned property unless interpartial access is required. This is just to ensure that there is some buffer between a new street that would go adjacent to a residentially zoned property.
But we also have a separate art chapter. I can't recall the number at this moment, but it's for streets and sidewalks, so we would need to make sure that all of these complied with whatever plan that we adopt in the future.
All right, the five is on illicit discharge and illegal connection of code on sewage?
Yes, this is a requirement based on the EPDs because of your permit for your municipal MS4. And so you have to have this ordinance that, that regulates who can connect to your stormwater system, and what can be put in your stormwater system. That's the illicit discharge, and it's basically under the Clean Water Act.
All right. Number six, we, we were talking about that before the meeting, on a couple of clarifications and changes, all right?
Um, yes, this is the Parks and Recreation Ordinance, and this has been circulated to staff for review as well. I did note a comment regarding section 19-30 regarding alcoholic beverages and a change be made to section C.
Right, okay.
To list all parks.
Yeah, all parks.
One more, one more potential change for that. I mean, I, I actually believe that I would defer for more freedom for our parks to allow the, to allow people to have a picnic where they could have wine and cheese, or they could have a beer, I can.
But not unreg, unregulated e-cigarettes.
Well, that's a question, that's another, that's a separate ordinance. But, you know, I, I contend that we can allow our citizens of Brookhaven to, to have a, on their own private time, drink alcohol in the park. I mean, I, is that something that, that we, I mean, what's the problem, what is the problem with that? I'm seeing some shaking of heads.
No, you're only seeing me grin.
Okay.
One, it's, it's an issue, it's an issue of enforcement, and then it's an issue of, you know, of the specifics of what that's going to mean.
Basically, he's saying the open container wouldn't apply to park.
Yeah, open.
During park hours.
An open container wouldn't, you know, without a permit.
Without a permit?
Without a permit, during park hours.
Because, you know, my view would be, is that you would be subjecting yourselves to potential liability associated with allowing people to drink in the park under, you know, some sort of standards, and the other part being is that it's, you're not gonna be able to enforce it. And, you know, if you go to Blackburn Park with all, with all the Alta tennis, they, they got coolers there sitting there with beer. I mean, I know that because I've got a daughter that's doing it. So, I mean, just, you know, so that's the point. So I think if you, if you put it into there and, and then all of a sudden you're gonna, you know, legalize something that, and have an intended effect, that's not really something that you, you want to see happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want people hanging out, you know, with their, with their 40-ounce beers, you know, on the picnic tables scaring away, you know, people from the parks. But at the same time, I don't want our citizens who, you know, are.
How about this, Bates?
To feel like they, they're, you know, criminals because they're.
How about we, we make it, uh, have a trigger, that if you are committing a crime in a park and you have alcohol, then that, then the ordinance applies, that in the absence of some other act, which, you know, maybe you're publicly disorderly, or public drunk, or fighting or something, and you have alcohol, then, then the ordinance, then the, they would be able to be charged with having alcohol in the park illegally. So like, you know, kind of like the felony murder, you know, where you, you didn't go out to commit a murder, but because you were present when a murder happened, it's felony murder.
So it's like, if you get drunk, it, it doesn't apply to you, but if you stay sober, you're okay?
Correct. I mean, that the, that, like the seatbelt law.
Behave yourself.
Like the seatbelt law used to be, where you couldn't get a ticket for a seatbelt violation unless you were pulled over for something else, right? Now it's different, but that's kind of what, you wouldn't get a ticket for alcohol in the park unless you were, had done something else.
Like disorderly conduct.
Exactly, that caused, where you get the problems.
All right. I'm here to advise you as far as, you know, the legal issues associated with.
I'm here to tell you.
I know what you're, I know, and, but I'm, I, whatever you all choose to do, that's fine, but I'm, I'm advising you that legally, it should not be done. You just can't, you shouldn't do it.
The way I'm talking about that, I think that solves the problem, does it not?
No, it does not. It does not, it does not solve the problem, because then you will have people drinking in the park, and again, it becomes an enforcement issue, and it more likely than not, they're gonna break the law. Somebody will break the law.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it becomes a charge, it's, that's, you can be charged with if you're doing something that brings it, that you're abusing it, basically. Same thing with, with, I mean, it makes sense to me, I mean, in order to cut a middle ground where you're saying either you have none, or you have, have it all, well, then you got people living, if you're, I don't want to have alcohol in the park. This way, you can have alcohol, if you're responsible, you're never gonna get a ticket. If you're irresponsible, you're gonna get a ticket for it.
I, I think if you, if you, if you talk to the citizens and ask them what they thought, I think they would not think this was a very good idea.
So, I think you've got the intent.
Bates' idea or my idea? Bates doesn't want any, I just want something in the middle, and you're wanting hardcore.
I think if you, you understand the intent.
It's not what I want, it's what I'm, it's what I'm advising you as far as, you know, what sort of, you know, what will happen.
Right.
And what the li, and what the liability will be associated with the fact that if some drunk person, you know, hurts somebody, and, and here you have this ordinance saying you can come in here and bring your cheese and wine in the park, and, oh, but by the way, if you, if you really get ripped, raw and drunk, then, then it doesn't apply to you.
No, it does apply to you.
Only if you get caught doing something else.
Only if you get caught, I mean, it's, I mean, it really is similar to the way the seatbelt law was first rolled out, was that you didn't get a ticket unless you were pulled over for something else.
The seatbelt law is there to protect you.
I, I know, Mr. Nanny State, I know that's the truth, I know it's there to protect me from my own, you know.
I don't know.
So, yeah, I'm moving on, I'm moving on.
Can we just make it illegal to search cups?
Sir?
Can we just make it illegal to search cups?
Make it illegal to search.
I like that, too.
Officer can't ask you, what's in your cup?
Put it in a brown paper.
But you have, you have open container laws.
I say we make it so you only can have those hats, you can put the beer cans in with the straw.
Well, I mean, if you, you know, if you want to, if you want to pass an open container law in Brookhaven and say people, they can walk around with.
Like you're at the beach.
You know, like, you know, walk up and down the sidewalks, do whatever they want to, then certainly that would apply to a park.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll circle back to Bates, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on from it and defer to your recommendation this time, but I would like to consider it. I, I actually think that, that, you know, I would defer to trust in our citizens until they prove themselves that they're not responsible enough to do this.
You, you saw a video a while back of some of our citizens.
Those are citizens. I don't know if they're in attack.
Tom, the reality of the situation is, you can go to a food truck event and walk on the grass, and this is going on. That's what we're talking about.
And that is, and we, we have provisions for that, and it's permitted, and these people that are licensed to do it. So that's fine, we understand that. That's an exception. Okay, what you're talking about is just saying, you can, you can have, you can go in the park and take your wine and beer, and as long as you're not bothering anybody, it's okay, but then if you, if you get called down, then we're going to arrest you. And oh, by the way, if, you know, if you really get ripped, raw and drunk and, and hurt somebody, then we'll be arguing our own immunity associated with doing something that's just that's just not customary, and I highly recommend it, that you don't do it.
So, let me move on to the second part of this, of this ordinance, which I think I can get a win on, hopefully, uh, section nineteen thirty-eight B, uh, let's make it legal to swim in our lakes, I think it, it actually calls out that, that it's illegal to swim in Murphy Cantler Lake in that section, it's not prohibited to swim, so I would, uh, maybe I read that wrong, but I would like it to be legal.
Swimming with alcohol, or?
After you finish your bottle of wine, you're not allowed to swim, but, uh, being that we've, uh, said that no alcohol is allowed in these things, I thi, as I read the ordinance, it would be illegal to swim in Murphy Cantler Lake, I would, in the future, like to have activities, water sports activities on Murphy Cantler Lake.
We dredge it.
Well, until we dredge it, you're not going to be able to swim.
Just keep in mind, um, if you move forward on that, you know, we're, we're looking at a whole different cost of operation, guards.
I think he's, well, no, I'm not, I'm not, he's not talking about make it a swim time, he's saying if somebody jumps in the lake off their sailboat, a little sailboat, and they're swimming around, they're not going to get a citation for swimming in the lake, we're not, not, not have government sanction.
Well, I would think, I would think government is bigger than that, that I don't, I don't, I don't think the police would write a citation for that.
Well, this to me is an easy change, I mean, why is it illegal to get in that lake?
Well, again, it's a public safety issue, what if you have children, you say, then, if we say, we say you can't swim in the lake.
Swim at your own risk? Swim at your own risk, I mean, I, you know, I.
I mean.
How, how do we get, will you look into that?
We'll be glad to.
Yeah, so, speaking of more liberties on this one.
Shot down on that one, too.
Yeah, seriously, all right, uh, where is it legal to fish, it's, section nineteen forty-three B, you've got, uh, the, that, we are making it, um, there's some restriction on fishing, legality of fishing.
You should be able to get a free license, I think, I think you should be able to, you need to go get a permit, but it's free.
Right, I mean, I, I agree that we should allow, you know, there's a future.
Just allow fishing in the lake, don't need, no need to get a free, don't need to get a free.
Then we're not allowed to get in the lake, though, you know.
Eat your fish, if you've got a big one, you need to get in there, swim around with it.
What defines, what defines our ability to use that lake, do we have to be on top of the water? We can't be in it, we can be on a boat or paddleboard.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we conclude that if you're wa, wearing waders and fishing, then you can walk into the lake, I mean, that would be, that would be an exception.
I would like to.
I got swimming my waders.
The, the reason I want to have some sort of permit for, a free permit for fishing is to, so we can hand out a brochure when somebody comes about what responsible fishing is, you know, about not leaving your trash, about throwing certain fish back, about taking certain fish out, to help start, start managing the, the lake.
Or, or warning them not to eat the fish.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, I want people to have buy-in when they're.
Could I make a suggestion, please? Um, this is one of the ordinances we need to adopt, uh, prior to the end of the year, so either we have another meeting so we can discuss it, or perhaps.
Adopt it or amend it.
Adopt it and then come back and amend it, but.
Except for those amendments we had earlier.
Right, okay.
Yep.
All right.
I'm trying.
All right.
But this ordinance does say that fishing is allowed.
Yeah, it does.
From the shore or watercraft.
Right.
So we're not banning, I mean, people fish all day long at Murphy Cantler.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are they, do they catch anything?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Who'd you want to eat?
They just don't eat it.
Oh, yes, they do, oh, yes, they do.
There is a problem of it being overfished, I mean, we need to restock that lake.
Yeah, we need to, they're, they do eat it, and we need to.
All these little boys asked me when I ran for office, if Mrs. Williams, would you restock the lake, because they're not getting much good fish.
Because the, the healthy fishing is not going on, they're taking the wrong fish out, and the little fish aren't allowed to grow, and, you know, they're, it's, that's why I'm saying a little permit would allow a, a citizen code enforcement officer to say, hey, where's your, where's your little tag for Brookhaven fishing?
There's also fly fishing lessons being given there on, on Sunday mornings by commercial providers, we ought to get a handle on them, too.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, just, we just note those, those discussion points, bring it up again the first year, thank you, all right.
All right, um, item number seven, uh, this is the special tax district that follows the, um, adoption of the annexation of the Choa property and, uh, Executive Park, uh, we have Earl Taylor here and Ed Wall, uh, to speak to it, but I'd like to recommend, if, if you would agree, that we move this item, item number seven, and amend the agenda and put it, make it item number five under reports and presentations, and call it an action item.
Okay, just remind us.
Since we have such a heavy agenda, okay.
Remind us, all right. Do we, do we have a presentation on it, I mean, we, we know what it is, and.
Right, I mean, you've received it, and, any, Earl's here, if you have any questions.
He might have any questions, but, we, we don't have to set the millage rate on this until the spring, correct?
Yeah, all this does is create the special tax district for the Choa property, Executive Park property, you won't actually set the millage rate, you set the city's millage rate generally, and you'll figure out how much your revenue shortfall is off of general city millage on the property, and you'll set special tax district milli, millage to plug the gap, so.
Earl, just one thing, I mean, you, you made a revision prior to this meeting, I don't know if the council has seen a copy of that yet, could you just explain what revision was made?
Yeah, so the version I sent out last night referred to police services, um, this morning, my buddy Ed hijacked the ordinance, and at the request of Marie, it became public safety and other services, where you just can't, you can't have a vague other services in special tax districts, so we've, 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 it just now refers to public safety and code enforcement services.
All right.
And I, I think I've emailed that over, and I've got, y'all should have that.
Is community, is code enforcement under community development?
It is.
Couldn't it just say code enforcement, I mean, uh, community development services, police?
Well, I think it's better to be more specific, and remember.
But I thought that, was that for a code enforcement officer or for building inspector?
Code enforcement.
No, that was our agreement.
Right, and that goes away after the first year.
Okay, all right. That's fine, that change is fine.
Okay, yeah, and if it goes away after the first year, we'll need to remember, you got to be precise with these things to amend this.
Right, we'll have to amend it.
The, only have it refer to public safety after the first year.
Is there any way that we could provide language in there that says code enforcement sunsets at the end of two thousand fifteen, so we don't have to come back and amend it?
Yeah, I can revise it, um, um, to refer to public safety services, um, and code enforcement services for two thousand fifteen, I can do that.
All right, so we could just say that in the motion?
Yeah.
We'll just make that note for the motion.
Yeah, and then I'll, and I'll send you a revised, a revised one back to you in a minute, but.
Okay. All right. Well, for that, I mean, I, I mean, we'd, we'd need to have that, if we're going to adopt that tonight, we need to have that amendment that we just talked about, sun, the sunset amendment, needs to be written down or something, so, so, when they make the motion with the.
Okay.
So if somebody could, if you could just leave that language, and then y'all can.
You can, if you want to.
I can mark it up.
Mark it up and just, if you want, if you want to leave it with me, I'll pres, I'll present it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm headed back to the office, I may be able to get it back to you, but I don't know if I can get it back in time.
We'll just handle.
Once you just mark it up.
All right, thank you, Earl, appreciate all the work you did on this, too, we really, really do, thank you.
Ed, thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
All right, other business?
None.
Public comments, mayor's comments, executive session, we do need an executive session for personnel, um, just for.
And also, I have one lit, one brief litigation matter to talk with you about.
All right, so, is there a motion?
I move that we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Discussion, um, just to give everybody a heads up, we might be about fifteen minutes late starting the meeting, so, um, Marie, before I, we, we call for the vote in the executive session, um, the crowd that is here, I'm, I, I know, is probably for item number, what is it, seven, what is it on the, uh, number three?
Three, four, five.
On, on section five?
Number three.
The club, the, the slub for Kroger?
Yeah, I mean, do y'all want to move that up, or is that, is that a okay spot for that?
Um, I think that's okay, because you have your first four items that are asking for the deferral.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine, all right, just wanted to make sure. All right, um, so we might be about five or ten minutes late starting the meeting, so just to be aware of that.
Let me clarify, I, um, move that we break for executive session to discuss personnel and litigation.
All right.
Second.
All right, any discussion, all in favor of executive session, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all right?